We will reconvene the regular meeting and I'd ask for the clerk to call the roll as we reconvene.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
French?
Here.
And Mayor Brown?
Here. Mayor and councilmember comments, are there any councilmember comments this evening, councilmember French?
Thank you Mayor, a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank our city staff generally for the Festival of the Forks and the work that they did in both setting up and putting in roadblocks and sort of managing that space as we did something differently this year as a city while we waited for our downtown to be completed. Special thanks to our public safety officers who were around to help direct traffic at the parade and providing those vehicles for the parade. The morning parade, I thought, was a lot of fun and the afternoon parade was surprisingly well attended as well. It was great to see everybody out there and so thanks again to the staff for helping pull that off. I'd also like to thank specifically Jim and Harry, Jim Leonardson and Harry Longdon. I received an email from a resident in my precinct about a tree that had split that was in danger of falling on their house and Harry worked with them to find an amenable solution that they helped provide resources and the city provided some resources to get that tree taken care of and the easement in front of their house. So I really want to thank them for working in a very timely way. The tree split was noticed a couple of weeks ago and we were able to negotiate with the tree removal service to help bring about that change. So thanks to Harry and Jim on that. And then finally, I wanted to give the community an update on Devin Parker, a year one Vista that we had who suffered from a diagnosis of diabetes, was in partial coma for four days and had a couple of strokes while there in the ICU. He's now been transferred to a rehabilitation hospital facility in Detroit. His mother I talked to, I actually talked to Devin. He's in physical rehabilitation, relearning how to walk and care for himself and has some confusion that his mother is confident will be clearing over the coming weeks and months. So appreciate, he appreciates all of our thoughts and prayers as does his mother. I've sent flowers on behalf of the Vista team as well as the city and we'll be in touch and we'll be providing updates. He did say that he hopes to get back to Albion once he's on the road to recovery and able to do that, but he wanted to say thank you to the community for the support and for his year of service here. Thank you Mayor.
Councilor Lawler?
Thank you Mayor, I just have a couple announcements. I just want to say on behalf of being the treasurer of Double Vision that we want to thank everybody that came out to the roller skating. Kids had a good time, it was alright turnout, the comedy show that we did later on that night, it was also awesome. And we just want to thank our sponsors, the Marshall Opportunity School, Castor Concepts and Oaklawn Hospital. I also want to put out there that there will be a town hall meeting September 21st at Washington Gardner at 6:00 PM to discuss the possible, the possibility of facilities of medical marijuana coming to Albion. Thank you.
Are there any other council comments this evening, councilmember Barnes?
Yes, I want to comment on what a festival means. It means different cultures coming together and sharing their experiences, their culture, their ethnicity and their heritage. So during the festival, I went up to the 600 block of Austin so I could get the black experience and what I got was nothing. It was totally a ghost town. I found foliage growing inside of buildings in the 600 block of Austin and foliage growing on the outside that was connected to the inside. I think that if we're going to be a very diverse city, talk about progress in Albion moving forward, we need to include that historic district. I think that we are part of the history of Albion and we should be included in everything that's going on in Albion during the festival time and times beyond that. Thank you.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you Mayor, I just want to basically add to what councilwoman Lawler was saying about the town hall meeting that's going to be held this Thursday at the Washington Gardner Building on East Michigan Avenue. Len Reed, my co-owner and myself are basically hosting it however, for our precincts. However, we would definitely and certainly encourage the residents of the other precincts to attend. In fact, the entire community is welcome to come. We're doing this in an effort because we've heard feedback that the community is not kept informed on events and the decisions that the council make prior to making them. So this is our attempt and our effort to inform you before a decision is made and if you'd like to be heard and you want to be involved, please attend the meeting this Thursday 6:00 PM, Washington Gardner School on Michigan Avenue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments this evening? Okay, oh, councilmember Brown?
Thank you Mayor, I just want to briefly thank everyone who came out to the precinct three meeting regarding the possibility for medical marijuana facilities. It was a great discussion. I encourage anyone who did not make that precinct three meeting to please come out Thursday so you can share your thoughts, your concerns and your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few comments, I want to thank the chamber and also city employees who helped with executing the Festival of the Forks this year. In spite of Superior Street being under construction, I think it turned out well and hopefully next year we'll be back full force downtown. I want to acknowledge our Director of Public Safety, Chief Scott Kip and Assistant City Manager Stacy Levin. They were the overall top male and female winners.
Ask them up, they've got it.
Oh, okay, they, it's Scott? So they were the winners of this year's inaugural Run Albion 5K series which was sponsored by which was sponsored by Castor Concepts and a number of other entities including the city. And the third and final of the three 5K races was held on Friday. Chief Kip finished as, like I said, the top overall runner in the race and Assistant Manager Levin finished first for the women. And then in October, they'll be traveling to Washington DC to represent Albion in the run for the Badge 5K race which is to benefit the National Law Enforcement, National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. So just wanted to say congratulations and if you want to have any comments about that particular...
We don't really run that fast, but no. I can't say there was a lot of competition, but...
Not bad for a couple of old folks. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Well, yeah, and we are going to Washington DC in October to run for the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. I've visited there a couple of times in the last couple of years and we do Police Week, there's Police Week every year in May which I would love to go to at some point and have been able to go. And it's quite an event as well, but this is kind of the first step in maybe doing that at some point. But the memorial, it's a beautiful memorial and they're currently building a museum to go along with it, so that's where the funds are going for that.
Thank you.
That's the trophy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to acknowledge too, there was a, really on kind of a short schedule, Coalition of Citizens. There was a project that took place on Saturday afternoon called See the Vision, Be the Vision and the premise of that was basically to get, I guess, men of, well, in higher education is a, under representation of especially men of color. And so with Lee Hampton who's basically the Director of kind of Inter-Cultural Affairs at Jackson College and some of Albion residents and Albion resident alumni got together to do basically a photo shoot of basically men who have some kind of post-secondary credential, whether that be an associate's, bachelor's, master's, some doc, former doctorate or a trade electrician or even military service. So that took place Saturday and I was excited to participate in that and I think it's going to be, that's going to happen again next year. So hopefully that will be another positive thing for the community. And I want to remind council, I think each of you have received one back so far, but the city manager evaluation form, if you could get that to me by Wednesday, that'd be great. Councilmember French?
How do we do that?
If you leave it, I'll come and get them, if you leave them in the city hall. So you turn them to the manager or the clerk, I don't know who.
Attorney.
Probably the clerk, not the manager probably, let's say that. And I'll come and get them and then tabulate them because we have a special meeting next Tuesday for evaluation, so please do that. And I think that is everything I have this evening. So we will proceed to our public hearing section, item A, vacating an alley, an easements and sell a property in the 52nd block, West Ash Street. And this is parcels number, I don't read all the parcels, it's on the agenda, to the Albion Malleable Brewing Company. And so we're going to open this public hearing. Now can A and B be combined too?
A is the public hearing and B is the vote.
Okay. So I'm going to open the public hearing, there's any, are there any comments relative to this matter? I ask that you come forward, state your name and address and we'll give you three minutes apiece. So are there any public comments relative to vacating this alley, easements and sell the property?
I'm Ben Wade, 600 East Erie Street. I'm one of the co-owners of the Albion Malleable Brewing Company. Just for kind of the record of what we're looking for and our motivation to get this alleyway and the sidewalk, as we are entering into the final construction phases of the brewery downtown, we need some outdoor space specifically for mechanicals. We need to put some things like a chiller for cold rooms and tank units, a cage with some gas tanks. So we want to do that in that, what's currently an alley space behind the building. So what we're, what we are looking to do is to buy that as well as the Ash Street side out to the curb where we can do, have one contingent space so that if we ever have to move that brewery or, and move that equipment, we are entering into as part of this proposal easements on both of those sides because we recognize that there's some city sewer and drain access on both sides of the building. So we also need some space, we're there for contingent plans. Part of our proposal that's during plan review also right now includes adding an entrance door on the south side where Ash Street currently is. So getting that Ash Street side also allows us to do some improvement that we want to do, put some investment both in that alley space and on the Ash Street side in the short term.
Are there any, I guess we can take questions, well, I'll wait for council. Thank you. Are there any other, so any other public comment this evening? We're talking about, the building we're talking about is I guess most recently was the former hardware store at the corner of Ash and South Superior Street.
My name is Daniel Farmer, I live at 1101 Weener Drive. The only comment I have is based on what he just said about it, since there are going to be flammables and whatnot in this space, is it going to be everything up to what we need to make sure it's safe for the surrounding area and people? I'm not sure if it's going to be resident and residential area, that's the only concern I would have and make sure we're looking forward and just be safe.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment this evening for this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for this matter. And then we will move on to item B, which is a quest, the request for approval for vacating the alley and the easements and the sell of the property. Is there a, and this, and this vote will cover, I guess pending any kind of amendments, but it will cover B1 through B6 under it. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. The one question I have, and maybe you can answer this, with the outdoor kind of patio to the south of the building, I know there was reference in previous meetings to basically like a wall being put up, maybe like a brick wall or something. How, is there, do you have a sense of how tall, how tall that'll be?
So at this point, I think we're, our goal is to separate whether and when and if we do outdoor seating, we recognize that we have to do additional approvals for that. So granting purchase of that sidewalk at this point, we recognize it doesn't grant us the ability to move forward with any outdoor seating. And I think proposals to satisfy those requirements and what we want to do with that is something that we're still hammering out final details on and we'll bring up as we move forward with a desire to do that.
Okay, thank you. Other?
Just so you're aware, Mr. Mayor, to have a permanent outdoor fixture like that, we're going to have to modify our definition section of our outdoor cafe, outdoor seating. Which is a simple thing to do, but just want to make you aware, we're going to have to make that modification.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you Mayor, Attorney Harkness, just for clarification, you're saying we're going to have to make changes to what we just approved as far as the out?
No, 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 what we, what we just modified, if you're referring to the last ordinance that we did where we changed it so we could have outdoor sidewalk cafes and outdoor cafes downtown district. The next subsection talks about, it's a definition section for that particular chapter and within it refers to outdoor cafes and it, and as part of the definitions it says that there can't be any permanent like fences or fixtures or things like that. And so what both the brewery and the hotel are talking about having is a permanent like wall on the outdoor portions of their outdoor seating. And so to allow for that, we're going to have to modify that definition.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, did I just hear him, I think him say something about purchasing or ownership of a sidewalk associated with this sale? Did I not hear that, I didn't. So is the sidewalk near the brewery going to be sold and apart from this as well?
Do you want to provide?
Yes.
Is that, is that a first or does that, does that occur with other companies?
Well, at least since I've been here, it's a first. They're interested in having the outdoor eating area immediately adjacent to their building. And I believe it's going to involve an expansion of the curb area. Yes, please.
What we're intending, the space that we're looking at is on the south side of the building, it covers the Ash Street portion. Currently the sidewalk is tight against the building. So as we make plans to do improvements out there, we don't want to have a sidewalk coming through the middle of potential cafe seating or areas. We would want to move that sidewalk out to along the edge of the curb so we can do the, use the space immediately along the building. So we're proposing to purchase that entire section so that when we get to that continuous improvement part, we can do flatwork outside, have a sidewalk that's out closer to the street instead of tied up against the building so that we can do our improvements tied up against the building.
That's clear, thank you so much.
Are there, councilmember Brown?
Thank you Mayor, so I'm looking at the map and what's being proposed is to move that sidewalk out and it would take the place of like potential parking on the street? Does, am I understanding that right?
The exact details of that, I think we're still, that'd be another proposal when we get to that point if we're asking for use of any of that, that street. Our early proposal included moving that sidewalk out to the current parking lane. Through discussions with MDOT, we were informed that we could not do that, that that cuts into the turn radius and stuff there off of Superior Street. So at least for the first 15 or 20 feet through the handicap spot or so, that wouldn't be an option regardless. Whether we move the sidewalk out up against the current curb or take out a parking space or two out into the street and move that out farther out into the street, again, I think that would be, once we get to the point of actually having that final design in place and coming back with a proposal of what we want to do outdoors, I think that would be a separate question. If we buy this piece of property now and we determine that that's not a route forward to go into anything on the parking, we would move the sidewalk out to within, to the piece that we're buying currently. If we have an opportunity to expand that a little bit farther, I think that's a, that's a future question.
And if, Mike, the map that you have in your packet was one of the first conceptual drawings, so it's not
It's a little dated.
It's in the most recent conversations. So one of the component pieces is the anticipation that the actual driveway there will be moved further west as well. Going to the parking lot.
Not at the city's expense? Would it be at the city's expense to do that?
No.
Are there any further questions, council, councilmember Brown?
Thank you Mayor, one of the questions I did have for Dr. Mitchell, and she answered it for me, but for the sake of transparency, I'd like to, to just say. I ask if there had been any consideration for leasing this, leasing these properties versus selling them? And Dr. Mitchell, share it with me, if you don't mind, share it with me that it had been considered. However, if the city was to lease these properties, we'd have to carry liability insurance, correct? So if anything happened, we would be liable, the city, we meaning the city, would be liable for anything that would occur. So I just wanted to, to make that known, that...
I guess one question, just hearing you say that, I think if we, if we, if we were to lease, ABA or whatever, lease a property, you can, you could have something where you have the actual leasee be responsible for carrying insurance.
Well, you could have the, you could have the less fee be responsible for insurance and have the city named as an additional insured, but that doesn't, doesn't mean that we wouldn't still get sued. We'd still be a named party and as opposed to if it's sold, we're not a named party because it's not a problem.
But we might, but we wouldn't have to necessarily carry that particular insurance policy, pay for it.
Correct.
And then in the case that something were to happen, and we hope that's not the case, but let's say, you know, let's say, let's say it stopped being a brewery, you know, you just decided to, you know, go to another endeavor and endeavor and the property's there, would the alleys revert back?
We have a right of first refusal document means that if, if they cease operations, the property can be, or they decide they want to sell the property, it becomes a cost.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you Mayor, just one more and hopefully last comment. I know that the brewery is trying to get up and running and I am anticipating and hopeful that that will be as soon as possible, but I noticed they come in front of us a couple of times for a couple of different things. With regard to a change in how things were supposed to be. I'd just like our attorney to basically state, assure me that this process that we're going through right now, it's, it's going to be fine for the public and there's nothing unusual about it and that this is something that we should probably move forward with.
Well, I think you've covered all your legal bases. You know, we put together buy-sell agreements. To sell the property, you guys have had a public hearing tonight to inform the public that it's being sold and let the public voice their opinion on whether or not you think that's a good or a bad thing. You've got a right of first refusal such that if the property ceases oper, they cease to operate on the property or want to sell it, it goes back to the city first. You've got easement agreements in place such that you've retained all your easements for any sewer, water lines or anything like that that's going through the current property. So I think you've covered all your bases, you know, from a legal standpoint, I think you're good.
Great, thank you Attorney Harkness.
Councilmember Barnes?
I would ask that this be approved based on the precedent of these cafes in Grand Rapids and Arbor. They customarily get the sidewalk space for business and to attract, and on Superior, we're putting in a streetscape right now that has a bump out. Any traffic that comes out there, you have to see the bump out and make a wide right turn. As long as there is a legitimate sidewalk with the distance from, with the parkway into the curb, I think we'll be fine for pedestrian travel. I would like to see it approved, thank you.
And then one question I have, I know that council approved funding for match for the parking lot, I guess regrading. Do we know, we have a sense of when that will be done?
We're anticipating that the RFP will go out at the beginning of the year to get the better pricing. In addition to that portion of the project, there is the lot immediately adjacent west of the existing parking lot where we're into the negotiations with the land bank in order to acquire that so it can be combined. One of the requirements for the USDA grant is that the parking lot remain under public ownership until it can be depreciated, which is approximately 15 years.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you Mayor, I would just like to say at this point, I have no problem with us moving forward on this proposal based on the green light that was just given by Attorney Harkness. So I would not have an issue with this, thank you.
Is there any further discussion from council this evening on this matter? Seeing none, we'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. We will move forward to presentations, item A in the presentations, oath of office to public safety officer Tiffany Bruckner and Chief Kip and the clerk.
Well, this is one of my favorite things I get to do as chief and we've been able to do it a lot lately in the last couple of years, so, but I would like to introduce everyone to Tiffany Bruckner. Tiffany joined the department back in May and began going to the police academy in Washtenaw Community College. She successfully graduated from Washtenaw Community College on Friday and began working on Saturday at the Festival of the Forks, as many of you saw her walking around, I'm sure, so. Tiffany is a graduate of Springport High School, she's from Marshall and she is currently in the Michigan Army National Guard and is in artillery, so. Yep, so exactly, so I'm going to have Jill come up and give her the oath and use that again.
I, Tiffany Bruckner?
I, Tiffany Bruckner?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support?
That I will support?
The Constitution?
The Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
And of the State?
And of the State?
And that I will?
And that I will?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability?
Faithfully and impartially?
Faithfully and impartially?
Discharge your duties?
Discharge your duties?
Of Albion Public Safety Officer?
Albion Public Safety Officer?
So help me God?
So help me God?
Now I'm going to have her uncle come up and pin her badge on for her. This is hard if you want to do it in uniform. Tiffany along with Officer Billy Lazarus will both be starting the fire, Callan County Fire Academy in first of October this year. Tiffany is also currently enrolled at Western Michigan University too. Tiffany is also currently enrolled at Western Michigan University, too.
Studying chemistry. Welcome to Albion, and we look forward to working with you, and I'm sure the public does as well. We will move forward now to public comment. Persons addressing the council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than three minutes. If there are any public comment, public comments this evening on agenda items, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Hi, Eric Tobin, 409 West Ash, just coming representing the Albion Clerical Alliance tonight. We just wanted to thank management for going through the process and negotiations with us, and we wanted to urge the council to approve tonight's vote approving our contract, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jess Roberts, 915 South Superior Street. I'm here tonight in my capacity as the Director of Albion's Big Read, which many appear already know about, but there may be people here who don't know about it. It is a community reading program now in its third year. And this summer, for the third year, we brought 20 local Albion eighth to 10th graders to Albion College's campus, where they learned how to lead book discussions. And this coming October, they will lead those book discussions as a part of a large community program of arts and the hu- excuse me, humanities. I just wanted to start by thanking the council for considering allowing us to assemble at Holland Park on the 30th of September, and to invite you all, and you all, to the Big Read Kickoff Parade and the Big Read Kickoff Event at Holland Park. There'll be fire breathers, and circus performers, and face painters, and live music, and a photo booth, and lots to celebrate. So, I hope that you will all come and join us. We also have T-shirts that we'll be handing out to the first 150 people who come to the kickoff event, which have our, all have our beautiful logo this year, and the names of all of our incredibly generous sponsors and donors on the back. So, we encourage you to come and get that. And I also just wanted to ask you to keep your eye out for a few wonderful things that are, that are sort of going up or up in town. One is that currently, in the storefront that used to be Sanders, there are 20 silhouettes that were created by the participants in the Big Read Youth Leadership Program this summer. So, the students trace themselves, trace their shadows, and then watercolored inside of their shadows. So, those were all created by local Albion youth. We, I hope that people will keep an eye out for the book hubs. Book hubs are places where any resident of Albion can pick up their free copy of this year's Big Read book, which is Charles Portis's True Grit. City Hall is one of the book hubs, the Charles Snyder Center is one, the Albion District Library, and the fourth floor of Volgmore on Albion College's campus, which is the English Department. I also just wanted to let you know that there will be these posters that will be up soon that list all of the events that will be happening in October, almost all of which are free and open to the public. And then, also to let you know that this year, we purchased yard signs with the Albion's Big Read logo on it that are in the yards of the, of the student leaders' families and the members of the planning committee. So, if you see those yard signs out there, that's what they mean. So, thank you for all the many ways that the council has supported the Big Read already, and thank you particularly for considering our use of Holland Park tonight.
Thank you very much.
And come out on the 30th.
Thank you, thank you for, for presenting, and thank you for your hard work, and those who are on the committee. It's a, it's a good thing for the community. Are there any other public agenda, public comments on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move forward to consent calendar for two session minutes and basically three permits for assembly. Is there a motion to support?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Unless you wanted to...
I just wanted clarification as to why we're now approving these events. We've not done this in the past, so, I just wanted clarification. I'm in full support, I just...
The clarification here actually came out of the, so, point of order, let me answer that. So, basically, when Coco, Eleanor Seaworth, was here, she mentioned that for things that basically were kind of routine or non-controversial, just to get them done, we could put them there. But if a council member had a concern, then that would be automatically, they could request how to put into items for individual discussion. So, if there was, if there was something...
Right, okay. So, in order for it to get to this list...
It's usually like a permit application or minutes, but it wouldn't be anything like substantive that we'd have to, like, like, for example, the selling of property.
Okay, thank you.
But, sorry, but I should say for council, if there is something in the future, under consent calendar, that you want discussion on, because the applications are in the packet, you can, you can request during that period to move something.
Just for clarification, we've not approved these new council rules.
Yes, well, this, this is, this is just a suggestion, just like, kind of like the three-minute thing, but, yeah. We'll move forward to items for individual discussion. Item A, request approval for a tentative agreement with the Albion Clerical Alliance, the ACA.
So moved, second.
Moved in second. I'd ask the managers just to give a, I guess, a summary of what's changed.
Okay, Mayor and council, as you are aware, we're in contract negotiations with all four of our unions. All of the current labor agreements expire September 30th. This is the first one before you for the tentative agreement with the Albion Clerical Alliance. And it's a three-year contract, it reflects a 2% increase each year, maintaining the existing 90-10 in regards to the health insurance deductible and contribution to the health savings account. So, it's before you for your approval.
Are there any questions from council or discussion? And I should say, there was a executive session on this earlier, so there was, there was discussion, so we're not we haven't, not given it some consideration, so. Seeing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item B, request approval of discharge of mortgage. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, I'd ask the manager to kind of give a, again, a short summary.
Mayor and council, this is one of the community development block grants that provided the the opportunity for homeowners to make improvements to their property. And in this particular situation, the original owners are deceased, and their, their family is, has recently sold it. So, we had a standing lien essentially in regards to that property, it's being paid off with the sale of the property. So, we were asking for the discharge of mortgage to be approved.
And this, what part of town again? What part of town, was this in that, the particular district?
The address is 205 Miller Drive.
Okay. Is there any, is there any, is there any discussion from council regarding this? Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, just clarification, we will be receiving our money.
Yes.
Thank you.
But we will not be discharging the mortgage.
Okay, seeing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item C, discussion of quote for repair at Rieger Park, and I'm assuming this is the pond. This is not the pond?
No.
Okay.
Well, this is information on, Mayor and council, if you recall, some residents, as well as some of the council members, had asked what we can do relative to the accumulation of scum over at Rieger Park and the beach area. And Director Leonardson did obtain a quote relative to what those repairs would cost. And he may even want to come up and give you more.
Good evening. What you see before you is a quote provided by Concord Escreveting. It's obviously a single quote. What that basically involves is two new pieces of pipe being installed, as well as two new valves. As most of you are aware, the issue that we currently have is we, in the uppermost southern pond, there's a valve there that's broken in the closed position. That valve's under about three or four feet of water.
One second. Sir? No, no, yeah, if you could just, if you do record, it's fine to record, but just to cross it, cut across there is not appropriate right now, so, thank you, go ahead.
That valve is currently located under about three or four feet of water, which makes it virtually impossible, short of building a cofferdam around it to dry the area up to repair. It's my understanding, probably, the most viable, most economic approach to it would be to put a new piece of pipe in. In order to do that, with new valving. In order to do that, the pipe that's in place is concrete. So, it requires us to install two pieces of piping and two new valves to get the job done. It would be my recommendation, we look at it for next year as a capital improvement, which will also allow the time for RFP to be put in place, so we can solicit other bids as well. For the most part, not only does it allow us to move water through the skating pond area, but it's also a mechanism, that valve, to allow us to remove water from that upper pond in the event of extreme rainfall. We can open that valve up and divert it down through the skating pond, as well as back to the river, versus overflowing the banks, and obviously, there's potential for bank erosion when you do that. So, I think it is something that we really need to consider and get done. But I would also recommend that we put it up, RFP out, and solicit bids to have that taken care of.
Councilmember French, Councilmember Spicer, and Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. What's the status of the Artesian spring that was in the skating pond? As I recall, once we completed that project six or seven years ago, it didn't freeze because we had an Artesian spring that had been unleashed because we moved some concrete in from that spot.
Correct. As far as I know, it is still there and functioning.
Okay.
I don't know to what extent, but it is still there, as far as I know.
So, you're still, even though that valve is closed, you're still seeing water draining from the skating pond into the river through the, that drainage hole?
Yes, to the skating shelter pond. There's still overflow out of there. Not a lot, but there's still overflow.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say to Director Leonardson that I truly appreciate your efforts in satisfying our questions and concern when we pose them. We've only been working together since we're in December, and so far, with every request that I've asked of you, you have done it without complaint in timely manner and with sufficient and accurate information. I appreciate that tremendously. So, I just want you to know, there's probably gonna be a time that I'm not gonna like you, because I like you so much right now, and you know that there's, there's a comeback, and we don't like, no, just kidding. But, thank you, I really appreciate your efforts. And I do support what you said about the RFP, that we do that and postpone this until we can get another bid, because, or other bids. That was my concern, is that why we only had one proposal, so I'd like to see some others, as you suggested, and I thank you for your efforts very much.
And I thank you for the support. One of the other things I have looked at as a consideration for the skating pond would be some type of an aeration device that would keep that pond moving more than it is currently, it would give, obviously, air to it. And I'm doing a little research on different types of those types of things where we could do that without a continued electricity cost. I've looked at some windmills and some other things. There, again, cost effectiveness is what I'm looking at, so. But I'm looking at other options as well, so.
I know there's kind of individual stand, standalone windmills or solar powered things, so.
Correct.
Maybe that's an option. Councilmember Reed?
Is the end result still to have a swimming area there?
I'm sorry?
I said, is the end result of what this is gonna all come to, is it still a swimming area? It was proposed to be a swimming area.
I will say that there's a swimming area there now. The swimming area has its own inherent issues, I'll say.
Yes.
I would like to see that, I'll be honest with you, but there's a lot of things connected with it, I think, that need to be addressed first before we commit.
If not, can I go back to a skating pond?
That would be a great thing. When I was a child, growing up in this town, that was the place to be every evening. It was a great draw for the youth of the community. Positive things happened there, and I would like to see that happen again.
Me, too.
I would.
That's where I learned where to skate, Joe McCracken ran it, and it would be nice to have it back as a skating pond, if it's not gonna be done up into a swimming.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, winter's approaching, so it's my guess that this is something that would be maybe considered in the next year's campaign. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further discussion. We will move forward to the city manager report.
Thank you. Mayor and council, most of this report will actually be items related to the Department of Public Services, and I want to thank Director Leonardson again for providing me with the information to share with you. They've been very busy with the 2017 Local Streets Project and the M. Superior Street Reconstruction. Cass Street has had a section of the storm sewer repaired and a new catch basin installed, which will now allow for drainage to occur in a historically problematic spot. The basin top coats of asphalt have been applied and the curb and gutter sidewalk have been completed, along with the new street lighting, thanks to the Friends of Albion College. Ford Road has a new curb and gutter and sidewalk repair, which were needed, and the base coat has been applied to both streets.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, Dr. Mitchell. I, I didn't hear you. You, you said there was an area that had been problematic with draining that's been fixed? Could you tell, could you repeat where that is?
I can't, but Jim can.
Oh.
On Cass Street, south, basically, on the south side of the street, across from the Recorder Building.
Oh, yeah.
Down here, there was a low area that always had water and ice in it. Not only was it a safety issue, but it also ate away at the, the old existing pavement. What we did was is race, basically run some piping over there, put a drain structure, a catch basin, to alleviate that. We figured it was a great time to do it, the street's gonna be tore up, let's take care of it, get it done right.
Thank you, I, I didn't know where, where, and I, thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize.
All right. And if you haven't noticed already, the rear of City Hall, the railing for the ramp has been repaired and repainted, including the gate that would lead going east. There are new LED lights that have been installed, and there is an additional coat of paint added to the front steps to include safety yellow paint in an effort to enhance the visual recognition, thanks to the recommendation of Councilmember French. Work continues with Whitman and Associates towards the completion of the USDA Rural Development Loan Grant Application for the Water Tower Restoration and Much-Needed Water Main Replacement. We did just receive the official notice from the state that we are receiving the award of the $500,000 towards the water tower. An asset management plan has been submitted and approved by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for the wastewater facility. Most recently, there's been a concerted effort to prepare the downtown area for the Festival of the Forks, so you saw our crews out there, and again, we're... so you saw our crews out there, and again, we thank them for the really stellar job they did in mowing and weed cutting and street sweeping and just removal of debris and just sprucing up the entire area so that we could be proud as people came to visit and have a good time as part of the Festival of the Forks. And I also wanted to take a moment to thank just our team in general. Stacy Levin, Scott Kip, Jason Kern, were all very much instrumental in working with the chamber. They were in a period of sudden transition in terms of leadership, and they actually were thinking about not even having the Festival of the Forks. But a number of local business owners, our team, all pitched in to make certain that it was a successful event. It might have looked a little different than prior years, but I think a lot of people still enjoyed it. In fact, we've had a lot of comments that people liked having it along the river. So I just want to thank everyone, and in particular Jason, who actually prepared the map, because many people wanted to know where the parade was going to be and where was it staged, and so he was able to actually prepare that for us to share with the public. So, again, I want to thank everyone who was involved in making sure the festival was a great event again this year. At the wastewater facility, work continues towards the completion of the equipment installation with the affluent pumps being placed in service. One clarifier sludge pump operational and progression towards the completion of the clarifier mechanical equipment, which is scheduled for delivery in September with construction to follow. And with fall, we're starting, all of us are starting with the budget process, so all the departments are coming up with their recommendations and proposals that we will be presenting to you in the near future for your consideration and input. And also, I want to bring to your attention, Public Safety is going to have their Chili Cook-Off on October 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and that will be at the fire station at 207 North Clinton Street. It's the 7th Annual Chili Cook-Off. Are any of you going to be chili cookers? Competition's on.
No, actually, we already concede to Len, so we're just doing it to support the Public Safety.
October 27th.
We will be chili eaters.
And I would like, with your permission, to invite up award-winning Stacy Levin to talk about another upcoming project.
I want to apologize for my paparazzi photographer. You know, you win an award and then the pictures start coming out, I'm just kidding. Okay, so next Saturday, September 30th, the city of Albion is teaming up with Albion College Canoe and Kayak Club and the White House Nature Center to clean up trash along the riverbanks and in the Kalamazoo River. Cleanup will begin at 9:00 a.m. and go to about 12:00 p.m. Volunteers will be fed a delicious breakfast that is created by Councilmember Reed, and that starts at 8:00 a.m. and goes through 9:00 a.m. Volunteers are encouraged to contact David Green, Director of the White House Nature Center, at 517-629-0582. We'd also like to give special thanks to the Enbridge Foundation for their support, and then we end the event right before the kickoff parade of Big Reed at Holland Park. So, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Stacy, you open the door for me. I want to thank that young man for having the courage to come into a council meeting. Looks like he's studious, he wants to learn. He didn't do anything wrong, he just didn't know.
Yeah, okay. We need more young people like you to come and see this process. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And then my final comment. I had the opportunity to meet with two representatives from Veridian, who are the management group for the Albion Marriott Hotel, and they were present at the Festival of the Forks as well to share information with individuals in the community about future job opportunities. And we are working with them, and in fact, we have tried to schedule a meeting with Michigan Works so we can schedule an actual job fair associated with them and some other possible job opportunities for local residents, so, stay tuned.
Future agenda items, are there any? Councilmember Lawler and Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. A while back, we discussed, Councilmember Barnes discussed that we could possibly give some in-kind to Double Vision as far as helping with possibly finding grants. The city could donate an hour or some kind of time to help them with that, and I wanted to see if I could put that in the discussion to see if we could do it, if we agree on it. How long can we do it in the length of time, as far as months, or one month, or whatever?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Brown and Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. Update on the DeRompel site?
And that's it?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilmember French.
Thank you. Approaching the end of September.
The rules.
Probably, no, actually, I wasn't gonna talk about it.
Oh.
But thank you for reminding me, that was great.
Yeah.
No, I was thinking that as we are entering in union negotiations and department heads are putting together budgets, we might think about having at our next meeting a discussion of available time for those budget work sessions. So if we just bring, everybody bring their calendars that day, we can sort of get, make some decisions about what days we're gonna, what evenings we're gonna focus on some budget discussions. Be lovely if we could not be frantic in December and that we could get it done in a timely way.
Absolutely.
And then council rules.
Yes. Attorney Harkness.
I mentioned at a previous meeting that we need to amend our minor possession ordinance because the state had made some changes in that regard. Came to find out from the Michigan Association of Municipal Attorneys that there's actually been a second amendment which accelerated the effectiveness of the new state law, so I'm gonna bring that to you at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other future agenda items? Oh, okay, Councilmember Brown.
Possibly. When is our next EDC update scheduled?
Quarterly. It's been a really good schedule. So the end of September would be the end of the third quarter, so I would imagine early October.
Okay, so I'll hold off.
Okay.
By requesting that now, thank you.
Well, actually, you could put it out there, because next meeting is early October.
Yeah.
Sure, let's add an EDC update.
Yeah. Okay, so you know other future agenda items, everyone is present. Public comments. This is the general public comment. Persons addressing the council shall limit their comments to three minutes. Just ask you to observe proper decorum and state your name and address, but if there are any general comments to the council, we ask that you come forward this time. And then also, council will not respond to questions, so if there's a concern, we'll hear it, and then we'll give time for the administration to research it and look into it, but this is a time for you to speak and us to listen. So if there are any public comments, please come forward this evening.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Chad Bozzi, 1021 Burrow Street. I would like to get added on to a future agenda discussion of modifications to the water tower when it does get out, put out, or an RFP. Each of you guys have seen a quote that I've sent to you guys. I've been working with the Albanians and the Greeks. It went to your precinct email address. And I've done quite a few water towers with the Albanians. And one of my main concerns about the speed of getting the water tower done, this is a copy of its sticker out front of it. As you can see, it was erected in 1961. So by it being erected in 1961, I don't remember in my lifetime seeing them put, seeing them sandblast the inside of our water tower. So therefore, being built in '61, there's a possibility there may be lead on the inside of the water tower. Lead paint. Do you, Jim, know of them sandblasting it since '61?
Yes, it has been done.
What year was that done in?
I would say it was last one of twenty-three or so years ago. It was taken care of then.
So a lead abatement was done at that time?
As far as I know, but I'm sure that'll be something that's looked at as well this time around.
Because when a company does sandblast on the inside, they have to send off samples to a lab so that it can get, it can go to the right waste disposal company.
Okay.
Right environmental company.
Okay, thank you.
But one of my main things was, the top of the water tower, it'd be nice if we considered putting guardrails at the top of the water tower so that companies such as AT&amp;T or these internet companies can lease space on our towers. Most of the other water towers you see around already are leasing space to communications companies.
Thank you. Are there any other, is there any other further, any further public comment this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Erica Flores. I live on South Clark Street, across from Harrington School. I am here tonight to respectfully urge the council to seriously consider reinstating citywide leaf pickup. The loss of this service creates serious hardships for many Albion residents who are not physically able to haul their leaves to the dump. Neither are they able to hire someone to do it for them. Granger allows pickup of six bags of yard waste per week. Six of these. What I doubt that I can get the leaves of just one of my trees into these six bags. What am I supposed to do with the leaves as they accumulate from week to week? Burning is out of the question. It's hazardous and creates pollution, especially if you have a severely asthmatic neighbor. I realize that budget is a concern, but I am earnestly prevailing upon the council to consider priorities and hopefully find funding as needed. Personally, I would not mind a small, one-time fee added to my water bill, perhaps to offset the cost. Unfortunately, our beloved city is not attracting very many newcomers these days, and the lack of leaf pickup doesn't make it any more attractive. Please give my request serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any, is there any further public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I come to you tonight with a very heavy heart. I have, I live at 1101 Wiener Drive. My name is Daniel Farmer.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, I was up previous, I didn't know if you had to do it twice. I've been in this city my whole life, 38 years, born, raised, and I have seen it do nothing but decline. And I have seen us fight and squabble and spend our money in ways that are unwise. That's the reason we don't have a school. Financially, they did not make good decisions. We're doing the same thing with Albion. How long till we're no longer a city? We're hemorrhaging citizens every year. Our census is down every year. New families aren't coming to stay here, they're not gonna stay here. My dad worked for the city for over 20 years, Dennis Farmer. Worked for the city street department. He ran that street sweeper. He worked nights, even though he didn't like it, and he knew we didn't like it, for years, to keep our streets right. I go down, we got noxious weed policy, three-foot, right? Noxious weed. Middle of the street, three-foot weeds. Eaton Street, look at the berm at Eaton Street. It's embarrassing. Embarrassing. We drive these same streets every day. I hear that people come up here talking about their streets haven't been serviced in 40 years. You can't walk down their sidewalks. But we care about a brick street downtown? How can I have pride in a brick street downtown that looks all nice and shiny? When my district looks like crap? How can we hang our heads high and be proud Albionites? This trash service on top of it, I feel stuck in the bag. By everyone here that voted yes, only one of you dissented. How many times have we voted no to a single hauler trash? You've only been here two years, so you probably don't know. But have you asked anyone who's lived here every time? And it's been put nine times since I've been of voting age, and everyone has been a definitive no. Why didn't, I don't believe in coming and just giving you problems. I got solutions. And if you'd have come and asked the city before you went and did it, why are we having conversations now instead of before? There was no conversation. Turner's closed and you guys went and did it. Because you could. And that's, that's un-American. That's not how the public system's supposed to work. I had to ask, the solution, yes. Why didn't you just give us a choice? Yes, the solid waste millage, which we've been using for it, that wasn't exactly its intended use, but it's what it's been doing, and so precedent's been set. Need to keep using that solid waste millage until we can go forward and fix this. The solution is this. I would much rather pay an extra added fee to have the personnel needed to do our streets right. I would pay extra in my taxes for that. And I'm sure lots of Albion citizens would if you brought it to them with respect. You should give them the dignity of knowing you've got the integrity to tell them, this is what's going on, this is what we gotta do, we need your help. Instead of, we went and did this to you, which is how all my friends see it. We've got this done to us. How can I feel like a free citizen when it's been done to me? There's a solution right there for you to look at and ponder. Ask us if we will take the extra burden that's needed to make it right. Not to make profit, to make it right. We can have donated Humvees and meals-on-wheel wagons and whatnot. And you say it's donated, yes, but it's like a game show. You gotta pay the tax. How much was that tax? How do I find that information out? Because I guarantee, it might have been just enough to hire the help we needed to get the leaves picked up.
Thank you.
Would you yield your minutes to me? I'm not quite done.
No.
Is that allowed? It's proper form, is it not?
It's for each individual speaker, and it's actually...
But she could yield her time to me, yes? Is that not proper decorum?
No, no, it's just per speaker. But thank you. Are there any further comments?
So again, Eric Tobin, 409 West Ash. Just on behalf of the Albion Clerical Alliance, I'd like to say thank you for your time and discussion on that tonight. We appreciate your approval. As a resident, just wanted to briefly mention, I know that you're having the things about the marijuana thing. Just wanted to say, as a resident, I would be opposed to the ordinance allowing the marijuana facilities in town. So just my two cents on that.
Okay, last but not least. Brian Howe, 213 West Erie Street. Got to do it the single hauler again. Got your letter, I paid my bill, okay, on September 7th. They said they reinstated me, and then I turned around and shut off September 8th, for lack of paying, okay? Now, keep in mind that what they're trying to bill me for is a period of time where they didn't provide service. Okay, they're saying, well, it doesn't matter. The city says you gotta have the service. I'm not gonna pay them for a service that they didn't provide. If my electric is cut off, I wouldn't pay the electric company. Why should I pay a garbage service that wasn't picking up my garbage? Since it was shut off. Okay, that's my point, number one. Number two is, why wasn't there a pledge allegiance at the start of the meeting as per the sheet? Anyway, but anyway, I do have issues with Granger. I talked to them, and they say, well, they can't do anything about it, it's because of the city, okay? So I decided I'd come up here and bring it up to you guys again. I'm not gonna pay them for service that I wasn't provided, okay? If it means I have to go to court, file a lawsuit, I'm sure I can find enough people to bring a class action lawsuit against both the city and Granger. For nonsense. So, if you guys can work it out with Granger, where they can reinstate my service or have me pay three months in advance, fine, I got no issue with that, okay? But I'm not gonna pay them for a service I wasn't provided. But I'm not gonna pay them for a service I wasn't providing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other?
Mary Norton, four oh six Pitch Street. I understand that, uh, Dennis Tomlin talked to you guys about a couple of petitions, and we were just wondering what they were about. I guess he talked to the lawyer, and maybe the city manager as well, and was just wondering what they were about.
I'm not familiar with that, and so I think that's something we can discuss afterward, 'cause basically, um, council, public comments for us to hear citizens' concerns, and then we can, uh, address that afterward, but, uh, I, mm, yeah. So, are there any other citizen comments this evening? I shouldn't say, excuse me, public comment.
Andrew Texel, eleven twelve East Porter. Uh, I'm one of the AmeriCorps Vistas, and I just have an update on one of the projects we're doing. Uh, we're working on setting up neighborhood planning councils in Albion. Uh, they'd be groups of citizens who reside in the same neighborhood who get together to meet and discuss, plan and take action on issues and opportunities in their neighborhoods. Um, and if you're interested in joining one of these, um, there are a couple ways you can sign up. Uh, you can either go down to the main floor of Albion City Hall, um, at the window, sign up, or you can go to the City of Albion website at cityofalbianmi.gov, and you would go to the Community tab, and then under there, the tab labeled Neighborhood Planning Council Sign Up, and so we're currently in the process of creating those, so there's a number of different ways they could go. We're gonna hope to have, be very open to residents who want to decide how they get set up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it? Councilman Brown, what is it related?
What?
It, is it?
Yes, it's about public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to clarify that there, for council, there is no rule that says we cannot comment. In my MML training and in council procedure, there's nothing that says we can't comment, and my training has stated it's best that we don't comment because we can open up from disruption. But this current rules that have been made, we haven't approved, so. It is not, it is not in stone that we can't co- comment, I want to make that sure, but I want it to be known, it's best for me not to comment because it, it opens up, uh, to debate. That's why I like, not a rule.
Okay. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, previously during council meetings that I've attended, before, um, I got on council, there weren't any, um, comments from council during citizen comments, so. I was just wondering-
I think in the past, there have been times where if there was a, you know, pertinent information that was shared, I, I think that for the sake of just orderly meetings going forward, like I said, once we actually approve the rules and it's in there, um, it, it just makes sense for, um, just the flow of meetings and consideration for other speakers. Um, in public, during the public comment section, to just have it where we're receiving information, then we can follow up after the meeting, just so that it doesn't, um, it doesn't, uh, drag meetings out and disrespects the time of other, other, other commenters, so. And, but the one thing I will respond to though is just for, uh, because of procedural thing, the meeting started at six, um, so the, so the pledge and all that took place when the meeting started, so, um, there was a closed session, so. Councilman Brown.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Amen.